Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The May 4th, 2022 virtual meeting of the Anarundel County Council is now in session. Today, we will hear from a handful of departments regarding the proposed FY23 budget. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian?
Present.
Ms. Bowler?
Present.
Madam Chair, we have all seven council members in attendance and our county auditor.
Thank you very much. Please pause for the invocation and pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Mr. Volkey today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If everyone can take a moment to please pray in a manner consistent with their faith as I pray in a manner consistent with mine. God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, courage to change the things I can, and wisdom to know the difference. Amen. And now if you will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My apologies, I was on mute. Let me try that again. Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. While a virtual meeting of this type was not envisioned by the Open Meetings Act, steps have been taken to ensure that this virtual meeting includes accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have once reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on Arundel TV and the web, and allowing the public to register via Zoom and watch the meeting using Zoom. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right, hearing none, we will begin today's presentations. I actually believe we are not starting with the Police Department, but with the Sheriff, is that correct? Okay, so we will be starting.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, it's the Circuit Court, actually, that needs to first.
My apologies, we are glad to have you here.
Court scheduling prevails.
Understandable. All right, so we welcome the Circuit Court here to present first today. Please remember, if you're presenting, to introduce yourself and continue to identify yourself each time before speaking. I will introduce you the first time around. So we have today Doug Hofstadt, Judge Clavins, Kim Klein, and Beth McCoy. And thank you to everyone else for being flexible with the scheduling this morning. And Circuit Court, you are ready, or we are ready for you whenever you are ready to begin.
All right, good morning. I understand Beth is going to give a summary first.
Yes, definitely. Beth McCoy with the county's Budget Office. You'll find the Circuit Court's budget on page 299 of your budget book. And if you turn to page 300, you'll see the comparative statement of expenditures. And just briefly, the general funds are increasing by about $658,000. The majority of this is an increase in juror fees law, juror fees from $15 per day to $30 per day. This is a new state mandated law. I will note that all of these juror fees are fully reimbursed by the state. There's also additional funding for a new contractual position to assist with, to assist the senior judge, senior judges. And there's also additional funding to upgrade the court's docket, docket display system. Unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to the Circuit Court.
Any questions for my colleagues? All right, seeing no hands, that we can go on to the next presenter. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Judge Glenn Clavins. I'm the administrative judge for the Circuit Court for Anarundel County, and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss our budget and tell you a little bit about what the Circuit Court has been up to lately. As you know, this has been a challenging few years for all of us, but the judges, administrative staff, and all the personnel of the Circuit Court have made our court in Anarundel County the model of efficiency and access to justice for the entire state. We quite simply processed more cases, heard more cases, completed more cases during the depths of the pandemic than any other jurisdiction in the state of Maryland. We accomplished this by planning for the worst and hoping for the best from day one. We never expected the pandemic to be something that was simply going to blow over in a couple of weeks. We began planning for the long term immediately. We flexed our physical spaces to be socially distanced, figured out how to move large numbers of jurors throughout the building safely, and upgraded our technology to give us all the different options of remote access for every case. Here are a few items that we've been working on in the last year. We're in our ninth year of, as an electronic courthouse, thanks to the Maryland Judiciary's electronic case management system, which has never been more important than during the pandemic, because the clerks of the state opened to receive pleadings, and we were able to process all the paper that floats the courthouse on a daily basis. During the pandemic, we were able to hold hearings throughout, many which were electronically, a combination of telephonically, by Zoom video, and a limited amount of things in person. We kept our dockets moving. And as of March 7th of this year, when the courts returned to what they call Phase Five operations, which essentially meant we were fully operational again, we've been back to handling jury trials and with a mix of some things still being done remotely as is appropriate. The good news is that we have totally eliminated the pandemic-caused backlog in criminal cases. We are up to speed with our normal volume of cases and have handled all that by prioritizing those because they're more time-sensitive than any other kind of case. That has created a little bit of a problem with family law and civil cases, and we're tackling the backlogs that exist in those to move those forward, and we're moving through those expeditiously. Once again, we've worked closely with the Budget Office to submit a conservative budget request for FY2023 within the confines of the budget projections provided to us. Our overall budget submission includes multiple grant business units for which we received state funding for programs such as our Drug Court, Family Services, and Alterate Dispute Resolution programs and more. As you heard, there's a new mandate. The legislature did pass an increase in juror pay to $30 a day as the base amount. We're waiting to see if the governor, in fact, signs that legislation. If that is signed, that will increase, but it is 100% reimbursable from the judiciary, so it's a zero-sum game for you all. And that's pretty much it. The one other item of note is we are really trying to professionalize the use of our senior judges. They became very critical during the pandemic to supplement what we did and were largely responsible for us being able to keep up with the caseload through a Herculean effort of settling cases remotely and so forth during the case. They've never had any kind of support staff, no one to help them with legal research or writing before, and we really need to professionalize that effort. We sometimes have four, six, seven senior judges in the building at any one time, but not a single support staff. So they've always been stepchildren, and this is the first step in getting them the kind of help that they were used to when they were active judges, when they had a staff. So it will be four, or six, or eight of them sharing one paralegal as support, which is a good start. With that, unless there's any questions, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing no hands, I will just say thank you very much for doing everything that you've done to, you know, keep the courts running smoothly during the pandemic and get caught up with the criminal docket. It's very impressive work, so thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
All right, I believe the next, now we are going on to the Sheriff's Office, yes? All right, very good. Our presenters from the Sheriff's Office are our Sheriff, Jim Fredericks, Frank Tuohy, Beth Parsons, Beth McCoy, and from the Budget Office, Naomi McAllister, Beth, excuse me, Beth O'Connell, and David Braun.
I'm so sorry, Madam Chair, I'm not certain what's, I have to double-check the script. It's police who are up next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think I heard something in the conversation that they were switched, and I, so I've been ignoring my notes here, which say exactly what you just said, police, I misheard. So, very good, we will go on to the police. And there we will have Chief Awen, Henry Farrell, Hannah Dyer, and Naomi McAllister, Beth O'Connell, and David Braun. My apologies. So Chief, we are ready for you whenever you are ready.
We're trying to get the video, it says it stopped. There we go, thank you.
You're very welcome. We can see you now, excellent.
Very good, very good. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council members, good morning to our residents. As you well know, are we pulling up the slide now?
Are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, yes ma'am.
All right, let me bring that up.
And to all who don't know me, I know the council chair announced my name. My name is O'Malley, and I serve as your chief of police for Anarundel County. And we can move to the next slide, please. As you all well know, our department adopted the Six Pillars of 21st Century Policing several years ago. And in addition to integrating the Six Pillars, we established three priorities for our agency moving into the future during last budget cycle. The first was enhanced community engagement. We do that through our new Bureau of Community Services with our youth activities programming, our diversion programming, and our reentry programming. We also sought to improve our communications. We do that with our new media relations team and every one of our officers who engage with every segment of our community. We also enhanced our crisis intervention. We were very much aware that more people seem to be struggling with whether mental health or behavioral issues throughout the pandemic and beyond. So crisis intervention became a higher priority for us due to those increases. And as you well know, we are internationally renowned as a crisis intervention team, sought by many agencies, not only regionally, but throughout this country on both our services and our subject matter expertise. We, as many agencies throughout this country, have been proactively recruiting. However, our department is no exception to the negative impact police departments across the country have experienced over the last few years with hiring qualified candidates. I'll now turn things over. As you can see in the left margin, you can see our authorized strength, our total positions throughout the Police Department, and our general fund of $182 million. And at this time, I'll turn things over to Mr. Farrell to present an overview of our FY23 requests. We appreciate your consideration.
Good morning, Henry Farrell, this department's fiscal manager. So the next slide, page three, is designed to give you guys a feel for where does $182 million go at the end of the day? It's an awful lot of money, a lot of pages in the budget book. I'm going to try to make it as painless as possible to give everybody.
Recording in progress.
Of where $182 million of the general fund goes. So at roughly 90%, personal services is $156 million, which ultimately pays the salaries and benefits of the 1,033 positions plus numerous contractual positions, primarily crossing guards. Contractual services at $16 million is almost 10% of our budget. A majority of that 16 million is about $14 million in annual maintenance and operating costs paid to central services for leasing of vehicles and replacing equipment. It also includes some software, hardware, annual maintenance costs. Supplies and materials at $4 million, most of which is attributable to ballistic vests, tasers, safety equipment, training ammunition, and uniforms. The business and travel at half a million dollars amounts to training and law books for recruit officers. And at roughly 2% is capital outlay, $3.7 million. Even though it's a very small percentage of the budget, it's a pretty high number for us this year, and that's due to the funding for 50 vehicles so that we can supply each officer a personal patrol vehicle as they exit the recruit academy. And finally, there is $140,000 in the confidential expense line, which includes drug buys, confidential performance, and primarily paying fines, subpoenas for record data and investigations. So on the next slide, page four, is another way to look at the same amount of money. And basically, what I'm attempting to do here is explain what's changed and what's different. So in personal services, there's a little over $6 million increase that is made up primarily of countywide pay packages, FOP, non-reps, clerical and maintenance units. We have them all in this department. There is a list that the Budget Office will probably provide you of all the colet merits, one-time bonuses, et cetera. So primarily, that $6 million is made up of the countywide pay packages. There are, however, five new civilian positions in our budget for this year. Four of those positions go into our central records unit to meet state law mandates for Maryland Public Information Act requests related to body cameras, as well as expungements. And there's another civilian veterinarian position added in the animal care and control section. In addition, there are two new sworn officers added to the personal services for next year. Under contractual services, there's a little over $800,000 increase, and that really amounts to, again, paying central services for vehicle operating and replacement expenses. I would imagine you're going to hear and/or see this comment made throughout every department that has any substantial number of vehicles due to fuel and the purchase cost of vehicles increasing. In supplies and materials, a little over $200,000 increase, primarily a huge number of a variety of things, but primarily tasers, safety equipment, uniforms, et cetera. And in business and travel, as I mentioned earlier, that's primarily training for us. We did add some money this year for the police community relation councils so that they can do some printing, a little bit in each district, making, making some advertising for those folks so they can pass along to the community when their meetings will be held. In the capital outlay line, there's a $1.8 million increase. Again, a huge variety of things. I've listed for you the four major big-ticket items. Obviously, the biggest one being the 50 vehicles at $2.6 million purchase. And then in grants, the grants contributions line has actually gone down, and that reflects, I think, the county budget office is attempting to centralize the funding for mental health and probably the Health Department. And so they've removed that from our budget. Nothing's changed for us there, just a different place to fund. So that's kind of a summary of where we are in FY23 proposed budget. There are 10 other budget pages in your thick budget book. I'm prepared to flip through that if you have questions about that, but really, it's the same information in a little more confusing manner as what we presented thus far. So any operating questions at this point?
Go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Jessica Hare, District 7. Thank you so much for that presentation. I just have two quick questions. The first is on the four positions to central records. I realize those are from state, you know, you're responding to some mandates from the state, but how did you come up with needing four people? And then the second question on the 50 vehicles, on the new vehicles, if those are replacing any existing vehicles, what's the average age of the existing vehicles that they're replacing?
Again, Henry Farrell. So your first question about the four positions. So as you guys know, this is, the body cameras is a little bit new to us. We took a educated guess at what it would take to get the job done, and obviously, we shorted ourselves a little bit. So these four positions of different varieties of management assistant, office support specialist, office support assistant two, and program specialist are all doing specific and unique functions in central records. And so we need those four. And again, it's very possible we may be before you this time next year asking for more. So we're hoping that these four will get the job done for us. Regarding the 50 vehicles, they are not replacing existing vehicles. They are additions to the fleet, so.
Perfect, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone, thank you for the presentation. So I guess my question is hopefully simple, we'll see. How many sworn officers, new sworn officers, did you request in your budget request to the county executive versus how many were funded in the budget that the county executive put forward?
So we had many discussions with the administration about adding, you know, a large number of officers, but the truth is, the struggle we're having recruiting, it's not valuable to add vacant positions. We can barely staff our authorized strength today. So, you know, we feel like in a perfect world, for us, staffing not being a problem, you know, we could be anywhere between 30 and 50 cops added to the budget zone, but there's no sense in doing that when you can't fill the positions.
And if I may, Mr. Volkey, as we see, because we are monitoring our staffing levels in addition to recruitment and hiring, which is important, the hiring number, as we see that needle moving, I've already asked our staff to conduct a staffing study, so we have that completed for us. So we'll be coming to you as we see things improving, asking for additional personnel based on the staffing study. Several years ago, IACP conducted one for us and pretty much reported that we're 100 officers short. And as you've heard Mr. Farrell report, we're not meeting our minimum, I mean, our authorized strength just yet. We're shy of it, we're looking forward to moving the needle, but we're not there yet. But as soon as we get there, we will be asking for additional officers. And unfortunately, the number is going to reflect more than what IACP reported several years ago.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So thank you all for being here this morning, and your presentation was very helpful. I just have one very quick question in the grants contribution, another section. The money that remains in this portion of the budget, does any of that cover the officers who are greeting at our elementary schools? Is that continuing into next year?
Yes, it is.
Perfect, thank you.
I'm going to jump in here with a question because I think my colleagues have run out, but I'm just curious, what kind of impact do you expect? I mean, I'm hoping that the new vehicles that will be provided to every sworn officer once they complete the academy will help in recruiting? Is that, how widespread is that as a, I guess, as a benefit? Is that something that's very common? Maybe some have, you know, sort of medium? How is, just tell me, you know, how does that compare with other jurisdictions? Are we, where are we at?
So you know, we're considered one of the Big Seven, most progressive Big Seven agencies do provide take-home car programming to their officers. The issue with the purchase of the new vehicles is that in years past, as we hire officers, as we hire today, we budget for equipment to include a vehicle. In years past, that wasn't necessarily done in its entirety, so we have a shortage of cruisers. But the benefit is obviously to the resident because as most officers traverse the county, whether on or off duty, we're, you know, obviously in a position where we provide more visibility. There are agencies who don't have a take-home car program, so it's definitely a benefit or an added benefit as a recruitment, a recruitment incentive for us.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully that, I mean, I know there's so many factors impacting recruitment, but hopefully that can be one that'll nudge a few more people our way.
Fortunately, we're blessed that we're the Anarundel County Police Department, and we're highly respected in this region. It's just a matter of the shift in perception and individuals desiring to pursue a career in law enforcement, so we're hopeful to see more folks become involved and desire to be police officers again.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Ms. Pickard, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to ask about the two new sworn officer positions. Do you have, are they budgeted at a certain rank? And do you have an idea of where you would be placing them in the department?
Yes, this is Henry Farrell. So the two sworn positions are added to assist in beginning a school bus and speed camera program. State law mandates that a sworn officer needs to review citations on speed cameras prior to their issuance, so these two positions are going to be focused solely on that. They're being added as entry-level police officers, but we basically would take a veteran officer, put him in that role, and then train two new officers for a patrol spot that they vacated. It's typically our operating procedure.
Thank you. And Mr. Prus, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, did you need a follow-up, or are you set? I guess she's set. Mr. Pruski, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilman Andrew Pruski. I just want to, first of all, give some kudos to the department. Over the past few weeks, we've had several crossing guards that either have quit or have not been taken, and I know the Anarundel Police have assisted in my community, so I wanted to give the chief and the department kudos for that. And again, that's another issue that we need to deal with, with raising the pay for crossing guards. But I had a question. Again, this was kind of brought up in the Health Department piece a few years ago, and I know I keep asking this question, but it's important, talk about why we provide resources. We have the helicopter program that has been used for rabies drops for the health program, but I also want to know, since Howard County canceled their helicopter program, have they called us for assistance in need? And then also, how valuable has that been and be able to keep that in the budget? I know there were some concerns about the cost, but I know that there's been several occasions, even with the fireboat that overturned, and also some other rescues. But I was just curious if you can comment on that, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
So although we've not had, I've had informal conversations with folks on the Howard County side who actually have expressed that they miss the benefit of the aerial support with live individuals on the helicopter to be able to assist them with, you know, solving crimes on the ground and identifying or locating suspects who may be secreted in a woodland area, and they don't have the technology of a drone program, or the drone program does not possess the technology that our helicopters possess to locate individuals who may be hiding on the ground. So that's just some of the feedback I've heard from the Howard County side. From our side, I hear from our officers the appreciation for the aerial support, again, with the spotters onboard the helicopter to help identify suspects who are on the ground. We have the FLIR technology, which, you know, you're able to detect the heat in the human body to see where someone may be hiding. So that is the benefit to having the aerial support versus a drone program. Did I answer your question, Mr. Pruski?
You did, thank you.
All right, I'm seeing no additional questions on the operating side. I think we're ready to move on to the police capital budget.
Okay, if we could go back to the presentation, Chair, page five, please. And so we have four projects to speak about today. One is the new police firing range, a new request for 23, and then three other projects, the training academy, evidence and forensic science unit, and special operations. On the next slide is the new firing range request. As you can see, some images of our current outdoor facility, some of the shots with standing water, which become ice and sometimes snow in the wintertime, and some of the inherent problems. and some of the inherent problems. You know, right now we have 20 lanes that are able to certify with handguns. The current lane length prohibits us from long gun certification. We have a few rusty baffles and such that bullets have penetrated. And so our two primary concerns are officer safety and then the environmental impact. So as you can see, we're requesting $25 million to relocate this facility on the current grounds and make it indoor. The next slide, page seven, just is a brief show of some of the improvements that we would obtain in a new project. We could simulate day evening conditions at any time. We have enhanced scenario training. We would be much better neighbors due to noise containment. And then obviously, the two biggest points again are the environmental and officer safety impacts here. So appreciate your support on that. If you haven't been down there to see it or care to, we'd love to have you take a visit and show you what's going on down there. And then, so we also have the three projects underway on the next slide. The police training academy, which is wrapping up with a scenario based training barn, the evidence and forensic science unit, and you can see the four major components of that project as well as the police special operations facility. All three of these projects are underway and on plan. So that concludes our presentation. If you have any other questions about the capital improvement program or anything else, we'll try to answer that for you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I appreciate that capital presentation. I have a quick question on the firing range. This is, you know, all disclosure, I've not been out to the range, but looking at the pictures, I'm actually quite surprised. This, there was some type of, I think it might have been when Mr. Pruski was on the council or maybe the council before, I think there was some investment at some point in time in upgrading the Davidsonville location. But I don't, I don't see how it actually came to fruition just looking at these pictures. More of a history question, not questioning the necessity.
I don't know that there was necessarily an investment per se. I think that was to upkeep and essentially provide temporary fixes to issues that were ongoing at the range. And again, we highly encourage you to visit the firearms range yourself so you can see the conditions. It's aged, it's dilapidated. And quite frankly, it's a safety hazard. So we're very grateful that this newly proposed range has been introduced this year.
I definitely concur, looking at these pictures, and I'll have my, reach out to you to schedule a visit.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from my colleagues? Could you, I knew this information is probably my colleagues already know, but where is the new academy facility? Where is it located?
It's in Davidsonville, Maryland.
Okay, thank you. And then the evidence and forensic science, is that, am I correct that that's in Crownsville?
That will be on the public safety campus here in Millersville, near yours.
Okay. And then the special ops facility.
The special operations facility will be located near the K-9 Center, which some may know is the combined support services complex, Rover Road, Millersville.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to have an idea of where those were following in our county. Appreciate it. Any additional questions from my colleagues? All right. Well, seeing very, seeing none. Thank you very much for coming. And I just want to give a shout out to the two officers that provide service at our meetings on Monday night for an outstanding response to the situation that we had in our chambers. I think we all felt very safe and everything was handled very smoothly. So again, we always appreciate the safety that you provide us. So have a wonderful day and we'll see you around.
Thank you for that feedback. We echo your sentiments and we appreciate, again, your time and consideration. Y'all have a wonderful day.
All right, you too. Take care.
Thanks. Bye bye.
All right, moving on now. I know I've tried to introduce them twice already. I believe we really are on to the sheriff's office. Is that correct? Madam Secretary, can you confirm that I'm on background track here?
You are absolutely correct. We are looking forward to hearing from the sheriffs.
All right, fantastic. So our presenters are our sheriff, Jim Fredericks, and Frank Tuie, Elizabeth, excuse me, Beth Parsons, Beth McCoy, and from the budget office to discuss capital, Naomi McAllister, Beth O'Connell, and David Braun.
Good morning. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, indeed. You're looking good, too.
Well, listen, I appreciate you trying to bring us on there multiple times. If you want to throw multiple dollars at our budget, we'd be happy to take it. Beth, did you want to start for us?
Sure. Beth McCoy, Budget Office. The budget book pages for the sheriff begin on page 309. And if you turn to page 310, you see the comparative statement of expenditures. General funds increased by about $997,000. Most of this is the pay package as well as funding for the three body worn camera positions that were authorized in FY '22. There's also funding for a shot detection system at the circuit court as well as additional funding for the mobile printers for their vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. I know that was pretty quick and I have a couple of highlights I want to hit for the budget and then I'll take any questions you have. So again, thank you, Madam Chair and the council for this time to discuss our budget. In the last few years of budget, we've worked together and been able to increase our staffing, enhance courthouse security, improve service efficiency and safety of our deputies, and to move, most importantly, our sheriff's field office operations into a new facility at Commerce Park Drive. That move has improved safety for our great civilian staff. It's given us new training opportunities and provided a much needed K-9 facility for our deputies here. Our budget submission this year was with thoughtful consideration to a few pressing needs of the office. And that's in the areas of safety, response to new laws under police accountability, and recruiting new deputies in this highly competitive market. What you see in the county's budget proposal from my office represents increases to operating budget costs that basically cover personnel expenses and not a whole lot more. There are some one-time supplemental expenditures, as Beth mentioned, for in-car printers and safety enhancements at the courthouse. But in the area of year-over-year investments in items such as personnel and vehicles, it's looking pretty sparse for us this year. In the executive's budget address last week, he stated that this is record spending for public safety and that they applied an equal lens to the budget process. And thankfully, also said that his budget gives the police department all the tools it needs for implementing police accountability board standards. But I'll remind you that we also are under those same standards and providing the new vehicles to ensure every officer is equipped with a vehicle. And we asked for vehicles as well this year. So in my budget, which you'll see in some of my supplemental requests, very small ask for positions this year. I asked for two new deputy positions to create an investigative unit that would be for timely response to those police accountability board complaints by citizens. Those same deputies will be responsible for compliance with new legal requirements brought on by police reform legislation as well as internal compliance inspections. Currently, the sheriff's office has no fixed internal affairs units like you would have in a police department. And thus, compliance activities and investigations are done by deputies and supervisors with other assigned duties. So we have to pull someone off a job to do any internal investigations. The current structure for us is really inadequate to properly respond and adhere to the new police accountability laws. So two asks, personnel this year, low amount of personnel and vehicles. We asked, I believe, for 10 vehicles this year. We did not get any of those in this budget. So I can make personnel moves. I can work with not getting new deputies to fill those investigative needs, although some other unit will be reduced. But I can't make any move in our agency that creates more vehicles for the sheriff's office. And for us, our vehicles have been a great tool. We have expanded that. The Colonel and I have expanded that since we've gotten in here in three years. We've been able to accomplish greater operational coverage, enhance community outreach, and improve recruiting by providing more deputies with take home vehicles. Even having, you know, any pool of vehicles would be great, but we want the take home vehicles so that we can increase that recruitment effort. However, since no vehicles are added to the office, we haven't had any vehicles added in three years. We are supplementing our daily operations with what should have been turn in vehicles that are now considered direct charge vehicles, and those are on borrowed time. Basically, any major repairs for those vehicles requires them to be deadline and turned in. And then the simplest statement as I can make, I need more cars. Because if we keep losing cars, if we keep deadlining them, we have crashes. We operate at a skeletal vehicle operation. So we have no spare cars to replace cars with. If we wreck a car, we've had two new vehicles that were in crashes this year, non-fault crashes for the deputies that were totaled. We have to wait an entire budget cycle to replace those. And for us operating with the minimal number that we have right now, we have to take, prioritize who needs a vehicle more and give that vehicle away to somebody else. So we are really in dire straits right now for that. And I would say finally, I'm sure you don't want to hear me pander on too much, but finally, we've worked together on past budgets to get so much needed personnel in the office. I have greatly appreciated your work and I hope we can continue to work together to get some of these things done here. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Are you ready for us to offer up some questions?
Sure. And I didn't talk about capital budget because I wasn't sure if you would have any questions for that. It's just one project that's been ongoing for two years.
Okay. Actually, since it's just that, why don't you just give us a quick update? And then I'll see Mr. Volkey ready and waiting.
So this is the only capital project that's been requested for the sheriff's office since 1996. And it is a cell door replacement project. It was funded two cycles ago for a little over $700,000. And it is to change over from a very antiquated pneumatic air locking system for our doors to a modern electronic locking system like you would find at the detention center. If you haven't been to our holding facility in the circuit court, we can actually house 88 or 90 prisoners in a day total at one time in there. Thankfully, we don't have to do that because it would be a madhouse. And we certainly have some reduced numbers during COVID and hopefully post-COVID here. But we are getting back to pretty normal operations there. So this request was originally a little over $700,000. But what we discovered working with the engineering company was that the parts that were going to be required for the conversion, for the cell doors are no longer available. So we had to now purchase new cell doors for this locking system replacement. And there have been some increase in some other costs as well as labor. So now that price of that project has doubled to $1.4 million.
All right. Thank you very much for that update. That's helpful. All right, Mr. Volkey, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sheriff, how much is the cost for the vehicles? What did you request? And how many vehicles are we talking about?
So we asked for 10 vehicles. I believe right now the price per vehicle is at about $50,000 fully equipped. And for us right now, we have 86 sworn positions in our agency. We have 53 approved vehicles. We currently operate with nine, is it nine? Eight. Of those direct charge vehicles. So we would hope to get at least eight vehicles so that we could turn in those cars that are an average of seven or eight years old right now, all of them with at least 100,000 miles, so that we could get us, get those deputies into some new, more reliable vehicles. Yeah. And the sheriff's office doesn't have many specialty vehicles. The only specialty vehicles we have are prisoner transport vans. We have three. And of course, they would not be assigned to a deputy because they're needed for prisoner transportation at any given time, to and from the court 24 hours a day on a call out. So those are not available for assignment to a deputy.
Thank you.
And one correction, we have 87 sworn positions at this time.
Thank you. Let's see, I believe Ms. Pickard was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the additional vehicles that you are coming to the council, to use your words, pandering for, are they needed for deputies that are on the road? Or are you looking to add vehicles for your deputies that staff the courthouse?
Right. So it's both. So if you look at the formulas of the way we hire for police and sheriffs, and, you know, I love what we're doing for the police department because, you know, both the Colonel and I are from there. And we think that anytime we can enhance law enforcement, it's a great thing. But the way we hire now is we want to, you know, hire someone and account for a vehicle for them. What we do here in the sheriff's office is, for some reason, over the years, we've brought in positions and said, okay, where is this person going? Are they going to field operations or security operations? And then we've decided whether or not we want a vehicle. Unfortunately, in the last few years, even though we've brought some in that have gone to field operations, we haven't hired, we haven't gotten any new vehicles for them. But these vehicles, yes, would be used for people who were assigned to both field operations and security operations. But what I would say to that is for deputies assigned to security operations, that's not the only thing they do. We have no operational flexibility to move if we're short or have an operational need in security operations or field operations. We can't move any deputies out to the road because we don't have vehicles for them. It gives them an opportunity to be out in the community. One of the greatest benefits, and I think the chief mentioned this herself, is to the citizens, where, you know, the more vehicles you see out there, the safer this community is and the more response we have. Taking you back to, you know, to 2018, when we had the Capitol newspaper shooting of the first five people that were at that scene. Two of them were sheriff's deputies because they have assigned take home vehicles. You know, that's a great, what we call a force multiplier in this county. So when you have, you know, an agency of 700 plus police officers and you can now add, you know, 80 sheriff's office deputies to that mix, it only does great things to enhance public safety. And I know, I had the vehicles are important because in a state of emergency or hurricane, a major storm, we're often called upon to supplement the police department through EOC operations, whether it be a place of refuge like a high school or trees down, those type of things. Without these vehicles, you have less than half of our agency available to you.
Thank you for that clarification. Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. You sort of actually just touched on what I was going to ask. I'm kind of dovetailing on Councilwoman Pickard's question about kind of the practical impacts of not having the cars. I'm looking at the performance measures on page 311 of the budget book. And I can see, you know, the number of court cases heard has dramatically increased over the last couple of years, it looks like, and the summonses and the subpoenas served was certainly a year-over-year increase from 21 to 22. And it looks like you're anticipating quite a large increase in 23 for a number of these subpoenas and summonses served. So what, I mean, if you don't get the cars, what happens?
If we don't get the cars, I mean, we have to prioritize. Right now, we have, like I said, some of those direct charge vehicles being used right now. And I'll tell you that those direct charge vehicles are the vehicles we're using for those security side, for the security side deputies because they're not getting the patrol miles that our field operations folks are getting. However, like I explained, if a field operations deputy is in a crash, we just had, for instance, in January, a civil deputy who does all that paper service, who putting a lot of miles on that vehicle. He was blind, struck in the side in Glen Burnie and totaled his vehicle. The deputy is still out as well. However, when he returns, I'll pull one of those, one of those direct charge vehicles from a deputy and give it to him because we don't have a replacement vehicle. And as slow as we're getting vehicles through the, you know, just the outside purchase process, it's taking us well over 12 months to get a new vehicle in here. And it just, it's, you know, it, anytime we lose one, we don't have a pool to go to other than those direct charge. And the only reason we have those direct charges is because I absolutely refuse to turn in the vehicles that should have been turned in a few cycles ago. And those are the vehicles we're holding on to. If we didn't have those. And those are the vehicles we're holding on to. If we didn't have those direct charge vehicles that we, we had at least had the foresight to hold on to, right now, we'd be reprioritizing service of, service of court documents because we wouldn't have enough vehicles for the people we have here.
And the last three budget cycles, we've asked for actual money to maintain those direct charge cars and we've gotten none. So we've had to work on our skeleton budget just to keep those cars on the road.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to make sure I understand, I want to make sure I understand the, the budget. With the four new positions, the new field operation, field ops, sheriff deputies, that, those are budgeted with a vehicle, correct?
No, no. So like that new position you see under the body worn camera program, there's, there's no vehicle added for that, not in this budget at all.
Well, is that a position that's going to be out in the field or is that a?
That is, the body worn camera program is operated, it will be operated out of our new facility at Commerce Park for field operations. And, and that deputy, just like any other deputy, will have, will, will be able to, to, to work other duties. And will need to be able to commute between, you know, even just simply between the circuit court and, and the Commerce Park Drive Facility. But, but they won't have a vehicle to do that under this budget.
It wasn't budgeted for a vehicle, but that position is vehicle critical because he'll have to deploy or she will deploy out to the field when there's a problem with the camera or have to seize a camera or maintain a camera, swap out a camera for a deputy. And plus that deputy will be doing investigations. So to be able to go out and investigate, they're going to have to have a car assigned to them or at least available to them, which we don't have, to do those investigations and get out to the citizens. And everybody, I'm sorry, every position we've gained in the last couple of budget cycles, none have ever been added with a vehicle. It's always been minus the vehicle.
Okay, but you have a pool of vehicles.
No.
They're just not take home vehicles.
No, we don't have a pool of vehicles. What we have is we have those direct charge vehicles which are assigned as take home cars. And the only reason we have them is because we've been requested to turn them in and I haven't done.
For a quick rundown, we have eighty-seven sworn deputies. And out of those eighty-seven, there's fifty-three authorized vehicles. Right now, that covers everybody that's assigned to the field operations section and a couple administrative positions. We have three vans that are used exclusively for prisoner transport, can't be assigned to a deputy. So the overall need for the agency to have every deputy with a car would be ninety total. And right now of that ninety, we're thirty-seven vehicles short. So thirty-seven sworn positions do not have a vehicle assigned to them. And what we were hoping is with the request that we made for ten vehicles was each of the next three years is get us up to those numbers, the next four years, I'm sorry, get us up to the number of vehicles we needed for each sheriff.
I'd like to jump in here with a question. So just to clarify, you know, this is something I would certainly look at, you know, trying to get some of those additional vehicles that you, that you need. You mentioned a $50,000 per vehicle cost. I'm assuming that's like the purchase price, but then what is your maintenance cost? Or do you have sort of, do you have, I guess, you know, maintenance and fuel and everything? Is that, do you have that somewhere else in your budget? Or would presumably you would need additional funds for that aspect of new cars as well?
Yeah, that, that's done out of the central services budget through the shop. The shop has a formula for maintenance for all, for all of our vehicles. And that, that falls under, that falls under their budget. So that $50,000 is to do the purchase and fully equip a vehicle. And then the, and then the, the cost per vehicle is maintained through central services.
And our fleet is, I'm sorry, our fleet is exactly the same as police. We're buying the same model vehicles. We're founding them in the same lot. They're equipped summarily. You literally could put decals on it, unmarked black car and make it a sheriff's office car.
Thank you. So just to clarify, for our purposes, would we need to request, you know, a, a, an increase, I guess, or, you know, some sort of supplemental increase for central services as well to cover those cars? Or is it, I just don't know. Maybe this is a question for our auditor. We can.
The, the, the simple answer, the simple answer, Madam Chair, is, is yes, that, that there would be maintenance costs that go along with every vehicle that is purchased.
And that money, that money we've budgeted to the sheriff's office and then sent over to central services each month on the lease rate and the maintenance rate that they establish.
Okay. And then one last question on vehicles. I know, you know, the, the county executive issued an order and then I introduced and passed a piece of legislation requiring that we move to zero carbon or zero emission vehicles. Are you on that path at all? Or is that, how, how is that going?
So, so that's a great question. Two years ago, I actually placed a, a deputy, one of my sergeants, who is now a lieutenant, on that committee with the county. We actually requested to be part of the hybrid vehicle program. We actually made a case that we believe that because our vehicles get a little less wear and tear of high speed driving, that they would be perfect for hybrid vehicle replacement. However, when the hybrid vehicle purchase was made for law enforcement, we were excluded from that purchase.
Okay. Well, that's, that's helpful to note. So thank you for sharing that. All right. We will definitely, it sounds like some of my colleagues and I are interested in looking into that.
Thank you.
Any additional, any additional questions from my colleagues?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Sheriff, I appreciate that presentation and I does feel like we're in a bit of Groundhog Day with the vehicle discussion. Quick question. I want to circle back to the, the position that you mentioned or two positions. I see that there are four added here. Is that what you requested? I just want to verify that.
Yes. So Sheriff Frederick, again, just to clarify, Ms. Fiedler, one of those positions is for a crime analyst. We've been asking for, for a few years. We have a grant funded crime analyst position that we want to convert to full time so that we don't lose it into the, into the market here. Because she is well-trained and highly skilled and we, we could easily lose her. The other three positions are basically mandatory positions. If you want to have a body worn camera program, you have to have those three positions. And that was in discussion with OIT and the police department on how they structured their body warm camera program. So those, those positions were, were the new positions, but three of those were already pre-approved by the council. There, you will see a lieutenant's position in the budget, but that is not a, a, a cost add to us. We actually gave up a sergeant supervisory position, deputy sheriff two, to gain a deputy sheriff three position because that position was needed to run the investigative unit that I need for PAB, which so far hasn't been funded with any positions other than that one.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? See, I don't see any more hands on my screen. So with that, I will say thank you very much to the sheriff's office for your presentation today. It sounds like we have some things to look into and it's always good to see you and have you here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you so much, all.
Absolutely. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
All right. Let's see. Going back to our schedule, it looks like our next presentation will be from the detention office. So we have our superintendent, Chris Klein. Oh, I always want to say it Italian, Michael. I want to say more, Michael, no, Michael. Michael Borgese, but I know that's not correct. I know that I'm saying it wrong. Patricia Moore, Catherine Robinson, Hannah Dyer, Naomi McAllister, Beth McConnell, and David Braun. So, and can you tell, tell me how to say your name, the correct way to say your name?
Borgese.
Borgese. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm putting, trying to mess with the Italian there.
Yeah, everybody neutralizes it. No worries.
All right. Well, thank you for schooling me again. We are ready for your presentation whenever you are.
All right. Good morning. I believe we're gonna start with Hannah with some numbers.
Sure. So, good morning. I'm Hannah Dyer from the Budget Office. I'm just gonna go through very quickly the department's budget book pages, which start on page two eighty-three. And I'm going to speak off of the comparative statement of expenditures, which is on page two eighty-four. So the department's budget this year for fiscal twenty-three totals 59.3 million in all funds. That's primarily, as it has been every year, made up of general funds. The department also has about 1.5 million in, from the inmate benefit fund and a relatively small amount of grant funds. And then I also want to point out this year for fiscal twenty-three, the department's budget also includes 480,000 from the new opioid abatement fund to implement, implement medication assisted treatment in the detention facilities. And that's something that is required under state law that all jurisdictions need to meet by January 2023. So then going the bottom of this chart on page two eighty-four shows the budget by object. And the two most noteworthy changes are in the personal services object and the contractual services object. The increase of a little over 2 million for personal services is primarily related to the addition of the pay package for fiscal twenty-three. And then the increase in contractual services is related to that increase for the MAT services in detention facilities, as well as a smaller increase for the department's, a smaller annual increase for the department's medical services contract. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the department to go through their presentation.
Thank you, Hannah. Do we, do I share my presentation? Or it looks like you guys have that coming up, right? Okay. I appreciate that. So, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the county council. As stated, I'm Christopher Klein, the superintendent of the Department of Detention Facilities. I'm honored to appear before you today to present the FY23 operating and capital budget for the Department of Detention Facilities. I'd first like to begin by introducing my executive staff who's here with me today. Correctional facility, excuse me, correctional facility administrator, Michael Borgese, correctional facility administrator, Catherine Robinson, and correctional support services manager, Patricia Moore. Similar to last year, I'd like to mention that May first through May seventh is recognized as National Correctional Officers Week, as declared by the late President Reagan in 1984. As then-President Reagan stated, the important work of correctional officers is often done and does not receive the recognition from the public that it deserves. Our department is filled with amazing staff that I have come to know during my first year who tirelessly work behind the walls and fences of our secure facilities that truly deserve to be recognized for all the outstanding work that they do. In addition to that, I'd like to take a brief moment to give a special recognition to correctional facility administrator Catherine Robinson, who has served the department for 34 years and is planning on retiring this July. It's truly dedication like that, that's the backbone of our department. And I just want to especially wish her the best in her retirement and future endeavors. On behalf of all the staff of the Department of Detention Facilities, I'd like to thank the county council members, the county executive and his office for the continued support of our department as we strive to fulfill our mission to provide for public safety through the confinement of pre-trial detainees and convicted offenders in safe and secure facilities while monitoring alternatives to incarceration and preparing inmates for community reentry. In preparation for this year's budget, we focused on getting back to normal operations. While we were reminded of the limitations and challenges that we faced over the past two years, we focused on creating and submitting a budget that's conservative and sustainable into the future. With that in mind, our budget requests focused on the areas of maintaining safe operations, secure facilities, and providing essential offender program and services. Looking back this past year, I just wanted to highlight a couple areas of accomplishment. First, we continued with our COVID mitigation strategy. And we're very fortunate to report that we have finally reached a position to start bringing back programs and services, which have been a collateral consequence of this ongoing pandemic. Second, in partnership with our medical provider, both of our facilities received accreditation through the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare with 100% compliance. And lastly, we completed our validation of our pre-trial risk assessment tool and fully automated and implemented those changes in March of this year. Next slide. For FY23, I'd like to highlight three specific initiatives. First, improving the vacancy rates for the department. As I just heard with the sheriff's department as well as the police department, the challenge of hiring staff for the Department of Detentions facilities is a continuing issue for our, our department. Our department is currently at a 15% vacancy rate for all staff and the numbers for detention officers is slightly higher at 18%. Many factors such as COVID, retirements, the nature of our work and the economy all add to this challenge. Although we've made some progress with hiring initiatives through offering bonuses and aggressive advertising, there's still work that needs to be done to reduce the hiring process time to be competitive in this job market. Second, as mentioned, medicated assisted treatment is the law effective January 23. While the department has implemented some parts of this law, we now have to commit to full implementation. This will include conducting assessments of substance abuse, making available at least one formulation of each FDA-approved full opioid agonist, partial opioid agonist, and long-acting opioid antagonist for treatment, as well as providing counseling and peer recovery specialists. We are very happy to be working towards full implementation with our partners from the Department of Health. Third is our ORCC repurposing study, which will help us provide options for viable considerations as we, excuse me, as to how we can better utilize our space at Ordinance Road to prevent the ongoing cycle of incarceration. While we have just begun this process with our selected vendor, we're very hopeful that the results will be something that we can begin to implement in FY23, as well as have an immediate impact on areas such as program, services, and reentry. Our budget request for Jennifer Road is 30.9 million dollars. Jennifer Road handles intake, pre-trial detention, maximum security, and various special housing for medical, juvenile, and behavioral observation. Our average daily population is currently 350 and there are 249 positions assigned to the facility. Next slide. Excuse me, two slides, sorry. Our budget request for the Central Holding and Processing Center is for 3.7 million dollars. As previously stated, CHPC is our newest addition and offers efficient booking and processing of arrests while effectively coordinating with our records department as well as the commissioner services. This past year through March, CHPC has processed 6,232 intakes. There are 42 positions assigned to CHPC. Next slide. Our budget request for Ordinance Road Correctional Center is for 18.8 million. ORCC handles both sentenced and pre-trial men and women and provides a robust array of educational reentry, substance abuse programs, as well as numerous other services. Our current average daily population is 175 and there are 123 positions assigned to the facility. Next, our budget request for administration is for 4.3 million. Administration is comprised of eighteen positions covering human resources, financial services, and oversight of our medical, mental health, and food service contracts, which roughly account for 7.5 million dollars of our annual budget. I don't know if we want to hold to go into the capital.
I think we could go ahead and, you know, add in the capital and bring all our questions at once.
Okay. So our capital budget request of three projects. First is our project to upgrade the Jennifer Road Detention Center security system, which totals 1.28 million dollars. The state-of-the-art system upgrade will include electronic components for doors and new security software. The system will improve accountability for detention officers making rounds, which will allow for quick, simple swipe pads to reduce, reduce the manual labor involved with that. It'll also reduce time for maintenance staff that they spend on repairing and monitoring an outdated system. It'll remove us from a single-source proprietary system, as well as it will be consistent with the upgrades that we made at our Ordinance Road facility. Our second project is the Central Holding and Processing Center parking, which is for 50-plus parking spaces across from the Westonapolis Fire Station on Jennifer Road. This lot will provide much-needed parking relief for staff and visitors, especially as we get back out of COVID and start opening up our doors to program services, volunteers, and visitation. Both Jennifer Road Detention Center as well as the Central Holding Processing Center staff will have access to this parking lot. And FY23, 113,000 is being requested in addition to the 1.697, excuse me, 1.6 million dollars that was previously approved. This project is in the complete This project is in the completion phase of the schematic design with construction expected to begin in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Our last request is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for detention center renovations. Jennifer Road was built in the nineteen sixties and requires routine maintenance and repairs to assure that the facility is safe, secure, and adheres to applicable standards for accreditation. Although not as dated, Ordinance Road, which was built in nineteen ninety-eight, continues to need repairs as is expected of a twenty-four-year-old facility that operates twenty-four-seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is with this funding that we expect to replace flooring at Jennifer Road, continue to maintain fencing, painting, as well as upgrades to our control room, and fund other prioritized facility improvements. So in closing, our hard-working, dedicated staff have a difficult job protecting our community. The detention facilities are considered small cities entrusted by the public to provide humane treatment of individuals in a secure environment. This budget will allow us to continue to improve safety, morale, and effectiveness of the overall correctional system. We remain committed to working together to provide public safety, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation and for all the work that you've been doing, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning. Thank you for the presentation. I was curious because I know that this is something, as you mentioned, that police and the sheriff's office are struggling with, as you are as well. What's your current vacancy rate in detention facilities in terms of the positions that you currently have budgeted versus how many are filled?
So as I stated, we're about, as a department as a whole, about fifteen percent. And then for the detention officer side, that's eighteen percent. So in rough figures for a detention officer, which is, you know, I don't want to take away from any of the other positions, but are really our critical, essential staff, we're about fifty-plus positions down out of, I think, oh, around two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty detention, sworn detention officer series. So we're really at a critical stage. We've, we've worked well with the union leadership on, you know, just strategizing throughout the critical months where we have a lot of vacations. But we're about to come back into that cycle again with the spring and summer here. And, you know, I know that that's a concern. So we've definitely taken a lot of efforts to work on our hiring strategy, but that's, that's where we're at at this current point, about fifty detention officer positions down.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up? Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anything that you think that the council could do by way of this budget other than sort of unlimited funding, because clearly that's not an option, but that we could do that would assist you to be able to fill some of those vacancies or to bring that rate lower?
I think one thing that we have to look at, our environment's very tough to sell, you know, to the, to the people looking for jobs because it's, you know, there's, there's just a lot of fear wrapped around with, you know, what gets sensationalized in TV and the media. And we're working with our partners. We were just partnering with the workforce on an internship program for certain positions. I think for us, though, part of our hiring process, we really need to look at shortening that process. So I don't know from the county perspective and maybe on the personnel side, if there's, you know, things that we can do to try and crunch that. I think the longer our process is that people that are actively looking, if there's a faster process out there, then they're potentially being taken away. I think right now we're averaging six months from start to finish, and I would love to see if we could get that under three or right around that three months. Obviously, you know, doing our due diligence with background investigations and making sure we have good viable candidates, but with, with the market as it is, you know, that, that timeline is definitely something that's, that's very challenging for us. I spoke with an individual last night, and his process, although unique maybe to him, took almost a year for employment. And right now with the jobs that are out there, those are people that are, you know, they're not going to wait around. So, so we definitely need to be aggressive to figure out what we can do. So I would love to, you know, if there's anything, you know, that you guys can do to help us with that, that timeline, we would love to partner on that.
Thank you very much.
Any additional questions from my colleagues? Well, seeing none, I will once again say thank you for the great work that you guys are doing. And as you mentioned, it is truly often behind the scenes. You know, we have, you're, you don't get to be out in the community in the way a lot of our other public safety representatives get to be. And so we don't always see, but we still greatly appreciate and congratulations on the retirement. And we look forward to seeing you again, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you. We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'm actually going to turn over the leader, leadership of this meeting to Vice Chair Pruski as I have to, I have a little conflict here, but I promised to those that are presenting that I will go back and be watching these on video later, later today. All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the agenda, we have social services. I do believe I see a few on the screen. Presenters are going to be Ms. Carnetra White and Ms. Christina Nagel and Beth McCoy as far as support. So I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Coach Chair and members of the council. I'm going to let Beth start with an overview of our budget, and then I'll be back with the presentation.
With the budget office, social services budget begins on page two fifty-eight. And on page two fifty-nine is our comparative statement of expenditures. General funds increased by about sixty-three thousand. This is primarily for a new office support position they're receiving. They also have an increasing grants for the Community Action Agency as well as Sarah's House. And under the grant funding, there's two ARPA requests programmed into the budget. There's about one million for the summer SNAP program, and there's about seventy thousand for maintenance needs at Sarah's House. Unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to Ms. White.
Yeah, I don't see any hands by the council. Ms. White, welcome, and you may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Once again, for the record, I'm Carney White, Director of Andorano County Department of Social Services, and it is my pleasure to be with you today to discuss our budget that has been proposed. We have a quick presentation that we will share with you. Next slide. I would like to just go over a couple of our supportive services that we have. I know you all know about our programs. But in these past few years, our programs have been very important to the citizens of Andorano County. And so I want to just highlight five of those programs that have been a safety net for the families, children, and adults in our county. First is our homeless services programs, program where we have outreach, shelter services as well as permanent supportive housing. And then our supplemental nutrition assistance program, which we refer as SNAP because in the government, we like acronym, we like acronyms, and so we like to have the, our own language. But it's formerly known as our food stamp program, and that provides food purchasing assistance to families and individuals with low or no income. And then over the last two years, we've had our pandemic electronic benefit transfer program. And this was getting money into the hands of families whose children lost the free and reduced lunch due to the closing of schools. And then our community outreach program, we weren't able to go on into the community to offer our services, and I'll talk a little bit more about those results. And then only I'm going to highlight our Child Protective Services program where we do investigations of abuse or neglect, and these are really unrecognized first responders that we don't really hear enough about. And next slide, please. And so just a little bit about the outcomes and how the budget supports the services that we provide. And first, I'll start with the homeless services outcomes. When I came seven years ago, we only had one person who provided homeless services in Andorano County, and through the support of the county executive's office as well as the support of the council, we now have a unit of persons who are actually out doing street outreach. We have a housing coordinator, and we have a tree arch specialist to help do some diversion of persons who are in need or experiencing an episode of homelessness. And so as you can see here, our street outreach last year, up until from July until April, we had a hundred and seventy-five open cases with an average monthly of seventy-four. And some of our outcomes, just in twenty-one, we were able to get twenty-six people to permanent housing and forty-nine to shelter. But as you can see, that number for permanent housing has increased in FY twenty-two. Just through the month of April, we were able to move thirty-eight people to permanent housing. And I think I want to thank my staff for the work that they have done in this area. And then our shelter outcomes in FY twenty-one, we were able to house nine hundred and thirty-nine persons with an average daily census of a hundred and thirty-nine. And you can see from there, a hundred, over a hundred and sixty-two persons permanent housing and nearly three hundred and fifty persons to other temporary housing. We don't do this work alone. So I do want to thank our partners in this work who have helped, who have helped us and who continue to work with this very needy, needy population. And that Sarah's House, Lighthouse, Arundel House of Hope, and Crisis Response. And also want to highlight my outreach workers who throughout the pandemic have been out working with persons who are living on the streets and offering supportive services and getting them into shelter and or housing as needed. Next slide, please. And then I want to highlight our SNAP and PET benefit outcomes. As you can see, in FY twenty-two, we've served over sixty-one thousand citizens of Andorano County in our SNAP program. And this is an increase of eighty-eight percent prior to the pandemic. So when we say that this is a safety net for families who are in need and were in, as we know, many families were in a crisis during the pandemic. So our team was there to process these benefits to be sure that this very needed service got into the hands of families. And this is the basic need of ensuring the families have food. And you can see thirty-nine percent of the recipients were children, and the average household benefit was over four hundred dollars for the families. And then nearly thirty-one thousand Andorano County students were eligible for our pandemic EBT program. And another sixty, sixty-five hundred preschool students, so persons that aren't in school, so they're under the age of six, were eligible. And this equated to nearly fifty million dollars, a little fifty million dollars in resources to school age, to families with school-age children during the pandemic. And while these are all federal dollars, the staff that we have in our budget to process these benefits are needed in order to ensure that these resources get into the hands of the families and children and adults in our county. So thank you for your continued support in that area. Next slide. And this is my last slide and last pieces. I'll talk about our community outreach. In FY twenty-one, we provided services to a little over three hundred families. We are in partnership with the libraries. We have pop-up resources. And what this is, is most people aren't, I always say, happy-go-lucky to come down to the Department of Social Services. Some people aren't able to get to our offices because of transportation. Some people don't want to come to because of stigma that they may think is attached to coming to the Department of Social Services. So part of the effort that we have done is to have our workers out in the community so that residents can seek those services in a very safe place like our libraries where everyone goes, and it's a comfortable place. And we have persons who are there to assist with if someone is in need of an eviction prevention or rental assistance, utility assistance. We're able to screen them for shelters if needed there or help them to process some of the economic benefits and then also make referrals to other services that are offered within our community. And so this unit is only a few years old, but we think it's a very needed unit, and it provides great support to the citizens of our, of our county. And then lastly, I want to highlight overall my child welfare staff who are unsung heroes, as I've said, particularly our Child Protective Service staff. They, as you can see from here, last year alone investigated over fourteen hundred abuse or neglect cases. And that means throughout the pandemic, they have had to go out, knock on doors, put eyes on children to ensure their safety. We don't often look at them as first responders, but they are actually first responders, the work that they do. They were never able to stop doing that work. They were consistent in homes throughout the pandemic. And that is also facts with all of my child welfare staff. So I'll just take a moment of privilege on today just to say thank you to all of our staff at the Department of Social Services who throughout the pandemic and every day and even prior to the pandemic have provided services to the citizens of this county who are in most need. And so with that, I'll take any questions.
Well, thank you again for that presentation. Are there any council members? It's like Councilwoman Fiedler. We'll start with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Ms. White, I have a quick question for you, and this is based off of a recent communication we had on the constituent case because I'm not seeing where this is in the budget, and I'm just trying to identify for future knowledge. Respite care funding, is that under one of these categories? And if not, where is that located?
That is not, that is state funding. That is not county funding.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. And then I'll follow up with the, the gap that we were talking about in that specific case, but I appreciate it.
Hey, any other council members have any questions? Okay, Ms. McCoy, any additional pieces? Okay. Well, we want to thank you, everything you've done. Just parochially, I want to speak to the residents that you've helped in my district. I know it's countywide, but the rental assistance, the support and programs, I've actually gotten stories where people have gotten back on their feet because of the support provided by your office and agencies. That makes a big difference, especially what we've gone through. So I just want to thank you personally for what you do. I know we see numbers on a screen, but those are real people that we're serving, and I appreciate it. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And like I said, it's my staff, so I want to say thank you to them once again. So thank you all so much. Thank you for your continued support throughout the years.
Thank you so much. Okay. Well, thank you. That will move on from social services. Now we're going to move on to the State's Attorney's Office. I see that our State's Attorney, Ms. Ann Colt Light is here, and Ms. Jessica Daigle may be also, I think, there as well. So welcome. And then I believe Beth McCoy. I wasn't sure who was going to start first, but we'll turn it over, and thank you all for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Beth McCoy, Budget Office. The State's Attorney's Budget begins on page three oh five. And on page three oh seven, you see the comparative statement of expenditures. The budgets in the general fund is increasing by about nine hundred and ninety-one thousand. This is mostly the county's pay package as well as five new positions for the office. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to the State's Attorney who will go into more detail.
What? That was very quick. Thank you. So, good morning, everyone. I appreciate being able to speak this morning, Vice Chair and distinguished members of the panel. I think we have a slideshow that we can start, and I will just talk about some of those notes as we go. You can go on to the next slide. So just an overview, I know you've seen these before, but this is what our staffing looks like. Sixty-one attorneys, seventeen victim witness advocates, fifty-five support staff plus part-time. Some of those are grant-funded. We have four locations, especially now with our body worn camera review office, which is housed alongside the sheriffs and the police department in the new facilities. It's a wonderful place, and we certainly have room to grow for the added four paralegals that we are requesting and have been approved so far. If we could go on to the next slide, please. If we could go on to the next slide, please. So again, just a breakdown of what our staffing looks like. What's new from last time when I addressed you is that we have a director of training for our paralegals and for our attorneys. He's an assistant state's attorney, and he's been with the office for many years, about ten or so years. And we have our body worn camera unit, which you see is ten and a half people right now, or maybe nine and a half people at this point. So that's what's different from the last time I addressed you. If we can move on to the next slide, please. So one of the things that we like to do is continue to do community outreach. We participate in many things outside of the courtroom, including our Annapolis Recovery programs, drug court, internet safety presentations to use, such as Girl Scouts and community groups. We participate in National Night Out, and we also partner with other agencies. We partnered with Maryland Reentry Resources and did an expungement clinic at the Glenn Burney Library a few months back, and that was excellent. And we are open to continuing to expand that now that the pandemic is lessening. We have a lot more in-person programs that we're participating in. Next slide, please. So these are just two of the awards that members of our office have gotten in the last year. I wanted to just talk to you about them a little bit. Our Driving While Impaired Program, our team rather, that prosecutes manslaughter, just won the twenty-twenty-one Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award in the state of Maryland for outstanding representation for fighting back against impaired driving. So on the left in the photograph is Carolyn Grammas, who is the trial team leader of that unit. And on the right next to me is Casey Hall, who is a victim witness advocate. And we have been recognized in the state as one of the top prosecution offices for these kinds of cases. The photograph on the right is Jennifer Dowd. She was recently recognized by the Anaroma County Police for her work on a large-scale wiretap case. You may have read about it. I think it took down about fifteen people in the state of Maryland. It was a joint case with the Attorney General's Office. And after the Attorney General's Office took part of the case and prosecuted it, we took all the other cases and prosecuted those as well. Again, representing about fifteen people who were convicted of things such as sex trafficking, drug trafficking, and even a kingpin charger too. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we are most proud of is our Juvenile Justice Therapeutic Crisis Intervention Project. There were twenty-five applicants that received this federal innovative prosecution grant from the Department of Justice. And we got that money just starting this past January, and it goes for two years. We are going to use it to hire a licensed certified social worker to work with Anaroma County Public Schools, Department of Juvenile Services, the Police Department and Crisis Response to target juveniles who are most at risk for offending. And we are going to find them through juveniles in grade six through nine with the help of the county schools, who have been suspended and who are believed to be at risk for getting into criminal trouble. And we are going to work to try and connect them with services, things such as a drug rehabilitation, crisis counseling, and other types of programs to keep them in school and keep them from getting involved in the juvenile justice system. We are currently seeking qualified applicant for that program. We had someone we were about to hire, and that person withdrew at the last minute, and it's been a little bit challenging finding somebody for this. But even if we have a little bit of a delay getting someone into the position, the money continues for two years. And again, that is a federal grant, no cost whatsoever to the county for that. Next slide, please. Wanted to just talk briefly about one of our major accomplishments, which was pretty good, given the number of times the courts were closed for jury trials. We actually eked out concluding the State versus Jared Ramos case against the Capital Gazette shooter. Just to let you know what that case looked like, you know, in the past, we've asked for money for our expert witnesses. But I wanted to tell you the extent that that case took for resources in the courthouse. We had over twenty-eight separate hearings, court hearings, from January of twenty nineteen until the case was concluded in September twenty twenty-one. We had fifteen days of trial. We had forty-eight motions, oppositions, and responses filed. We had sixty pieces of correspondence for defense discovery. And our case manager, our secretary, spent at least one hundred hours working on pleadings and discovery. In addition to the Ramos case, our office tried or had guilty pleas in five homicides in twenty twenty-one, which is pretty good, given the shutdown that we had at the beginning of twenty twenty-one. I'm pretty proud of that accomplishment. The next slide, please. So another accomplishment we had was starting from scratch with the body worn camera unit. We started with just two paralegals in July of twenty nineteen that were prosecuting Annapolis City Body Worn Camera and some Maryland State Police Dash Camera. So in twenty twenty-one, we added an assistant state's attorney to the unit. And then we began building the unit with paralegals as the Anaroma County Police Department came online with body worn camera. And so now we have a team, I believe, either nine and a half or ten and a half people. We have a Spanish-speaking paralegal who moved from New Jersey to take the position with our office. We had a retired police officer from Greenbelt. We had a former Department of Social Services caseworker. And we actually have full-time nine and one part-time paralegal who are processing this video. And this video is used for presentation in court hearings, trials. And all of this is done at our new space at Commerce Park. One downside to having this unit is that we train these folks. They're excellent professionals. And then some of them get stolen by other agencies, including two of ours who were stolen by the Anaroma County Police Department. I use that phrase stolen in good humor. Very qualified people who were excellent employees, and they were so good that other people wanted to take them from us. So that's one of the issues that we have to make sure that we are able to give them a decent starting salary. Anaroma County Police Department's starting salary for these positions is forty-eight thousand dollars for a body cam program specialist and fifty-eight thousand dollars for videographer. Our starting salary was only forty-one thousand two hundred dollars, so we are hoping to be able to continue to hire people. We recently had several of the paralegals get an increase. So we're hoping that will stave off people leaving the office. So next slide, please. What we are asking for today is for paralegals for the body worn camera unit. And the reason why is we are receiving much more footage than originally was thought to, that we anticipated. There are nine hundred Anaroma County police officers and Annapolis police officers in total who have body worn cameras. And there are studies that show that it takes about ninety to a hundred and twenty minutes to review every one hour of video that's produced. And our paralegals are in fact reviewing twenty-two thousand minutes a week of footage. At that rate, our paralegals would have to work a fifty-seven hour work week to review that much footage. So this is our top priority in our supplemental budget request for additional paralegals. We need three just to keep up with our current workload. What we use these body worn camera footage, what we do with our paralegals is we screen for safety concerns to make sure that we can protect the identity of children, protect the identity of somebody's job or rather protect or shield that information, somebody's cell phone number. If there are people in the background that should not be on the video, we blur out their faces. So this all takes time. We also mark the footage for discovery so that we can point to it in court to show where someone is perhaps making a statement or there's visible injuries on a victim, that sort of thing. One of the requirements that the prosecutor's office has is to generally provide discovery within thirty days. And it's not always possible to have that body worn camera footage processed in a thirty-day period of time. So we are hoping that these additional four folks will help us keep up with the demand as well as what we expect coming in this next year. If we could move to the next slide. This is what the twenty twenty-two is going to hold for additional footage that we are expecting. The Sheriff's Office has eighty-six deputies. They're going to have body worn cameras starting July. The Maryland State Police will have fifty-four troopers in the Glenn Burney and Annapolis Barrack, starting the summer and fall of twenty twenty-two. Maryland Transportation Authority and Department of Natural Resources will follow, as well as Crofton Police will have six more officers. So that new additional paralegal, in addition to the three that we're asking for, hopefully will help us as we ease into these extra officers who are going to have this footage. We do not know how that will look or how many minutes of footage they will be sending us. But that is a total of one hundred and forty-six new officers, starting in the summer of twenty twenty-two, who will have body worn camera footage. And we are anticipating quite a lot of work to process. Next slide. Okay, we got it. Thank you. So again, I talked about the Child Survivors' Justice Program. I think I talked about that last year. I'm sorry. I just talked about the juvenile justice. The Child Survivors' Justice Program is a grant that we got several years ago. Unfortunately, the grant helped us through one year, but the second year, the grant was reduced. And we are now asking that this grant be turned into a permanent position. The prior grant was part-time, and we had a full-time licensed counselor. Her name is Kendall Patterson, and she worked on this grant for at least the last two years. And what Kendall Patterson does, and she is the person that we would like to hire into this full-time position. She consults with assistant state's attorneys and victim advocates on all cases involving child victims. And she provides direct support to child victims. She also trains members of our office, as well as the police, on adverse childhood experiences and the impact of trauma on behavior. We lost about one-third of that grant funding. Again, it was only, I believe, about thirty thousand dollars. It was part-time. And so she had to cut back her hours when that happened. And I want to talk briefly about two cases where Ms. Patterson made a huge difference in the prosecution of cases. One, we had a home invasion, and there was a child who lived in the home who was present during the home invasion. The child began presenting with significant emotional and behavioral problems, became aggressive and self-injuring. Ms. Patterson consulted with the child's in-home therapy provider and mental health care team to evaluate the child's capacity to participate in the prosecution process. And the family was originally dead-set against the child testifying, but we were able to support the family and the child. And after many conversations, the child was able to testify, was willing to testify, and the family backed up that plan to testify. Ultimately, we were lucky that the defendant, knowing that the state was ready to go forward to trial with this witness, agreed to plead guilty. So that was an excellent example of a witness being able to support, be supported by Ms. Patterson. The second case was an adult male who was charged with sexually abusing his nine-year-old niece. The child was very hesitant during a disclosure in her forensic interview at the Child Advocacy Center. And the prosecutor who was assigned the case was concerned about putting this child on the stand to testify. Ms. Patterson was able to create a trauma-informed and child-friendly meeting space for the child and participated in pre-trial meetings between the child and the prosecutor. During these meetings, the child was provided with sensory activities to use during the conversation. And it helped her engage and promoted her ability to regulate her emotions and her behaviors. She felt comfort and safety. And following these multiple pre-trial meetings, the family agreed that the child could testify if needed. Previously, they were very hesitant to allow her to take the stand. And we were very fortunate that that case also ended up being a guilty, a guilty plea. So that is the last slide, and I'll take any questions that you may have, as well as my deputy state's attorney, Ms. Daigle, who I'd like to thank very much for her work on the budget as, as she has done the last three years. She does an excellent job. And I'd like to thank Ms. McCoy and her staff as well for all their assistance with our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colt Lightis. Appreciate the presentation and the details. Does any of my fellow council members have questions? Looks like Councilwoman Fiehl, you have four.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Ms. Colt Lightis, for being here. I have a quick question on that last slide. When you were talking about the Child Survivors' Justice Program and that one position, that's not in this budget proposed, or is it?
It is. I'm sorry. Originally, so we had originally had asked for five paralegals, and I understand that four were given approval. And then we asked for the child survivors' position.
Okay, so that's one of the, yep, okay, I see it. Thank you.
Sorry for any confusion on my part. Sorry for the noise outside. I can't, I can't control the neighbors or the birds.
Any additional questions from my colleagues? I don't see any hands raised. If you want to unmute, give you one last call. All right. Well, we certainly want to thank you. We know, obviously, we just evolved with the Police Accountability Bill and all the nuances, budgeting, you know, related to that. So I appreciate your presentation. It really hones in on what we have to do in the next processes. So thank you again for your presentation and the work that's going on in your office. We appreciate it.
I appreciate very much the county council and Anaroma County Government and our county executive for recognizing the needs that we have in our office, and I feel fully supported in this position. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Daigle, for joining us as well. We appreciate you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Secretary, it looks like we have the Orphans Court is the next presentation. I do believe I see Judge Car York and Judge Phelps joining us. And I believe, Ms. McCoy, I don't know if you're going to start first or allow them to present, but I'll turn it over to you all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that Ms. McCoy is going to start us off.
Okay, Orphans Court begins in your budget book on page three oh two. And on the next page, page three oh three, is the comparative statement of expenditures. Overall, there's a three hundred dollar reduction, and this just reflects aligning expenditures in FY twenty-three with prior year's expenditures for telephone services, office supplies, and meal reimbursement. And that's all I have for Orphans Court.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCoy, and thank you for your assistance in putting the budget together. We're an unusual sort of entity as part of county budgeting in that we are part of the judiciary, but are by state statute the responsibility of the county to fund. And so we appreciate all of your efforts in the past to keep us funded. And in particular, want to thank the council for our new recording system. You all might recall that it went out on us last spring, and we were in a terrible situation not being able to rely on it for recording cases. Our new system's working perfectly, and it is our intention to take it with us to our new place of business. I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but like the Sheriff's Office, we have been reassigned to the Commerce Park Building. And we're not sure when we're moving. Best estimate I have right now is sometime this summer, but maybe June. So we're just not quite sure about what we're going to find when we get there. We haven't been allowed in. We don't know how it's set up. I hope we don't have to come back to you asking for funding for some sort of supplies or something. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay. We, we are three judges working. The third judge, I'm not sure why she is, why she's not with us today. But one thing I will mention on her behalf, because she asked me to be prepared to talk about this yesterday, is that she and Councilwoman Rodvian have been discussing the possibility of a raise for the Orphans Court judges in our county. And I know no more about it than that. We, we are like everybody else, subject to the increases in inflation. Two of our judges are single-income households. And so they are interested in discussing that further. But until that is something that the whole council's prepared to discuss, I'm not going to get into that unless you have a specific question. I would like to say that we are very grateful to the I would like to say that we are very grateful to the Register of Wills and her staff because we have a very cooperative relationship with them. The registers has assigned two staff members who work for the Orphans Court in a primary manner as our court administrators. And they are not only handling the paperwork and assignments and so forth, they are actually incredibly knowledgeable about the law as well. And we're very grateful to those ladies, Eunice Owens and Deborah Cheek, for all of their assistance. Also, with regard to providing services and support to the Orphans Court, the Register of Wills budget is frequently called in to effect. For instance, for the move to Commerce Park, we are, we're told we have no moving services available to us. You don't want to see me try to disconnect that recording system and take it. So I think the register is going to help us with that. But I want to support whatever requests she might make for that sort of funding. We are primarily a service. I would call us more a service agency than anything else. People come to us when they are in in crisis. Sometimes people come to us when they just don't know what to do. We've had a number of folks come in who are non-English speaking. And we're able to get interpreters. And we're just a very patient court. Let me put it that way. And so people are comfortable with us. And it's a court of limited jurisdiction. So we don't handle the kind of cases the Circuit Court does or the District Court. But we provide a very specialized niche type of service.
I've been at the court now for 24 years. We rarely, even since I started, put in for a raise. And then when we did, it wasn't very much of a raise, to be quite upfront and honest. So anyhow, Judge Gibson is the one who's been talking to the councilwoman. Maureen and I, Judge Coriork and I really haven't. We're not against it at all. I'm not. But that's pretty much it. Everything Judge Coriork just told you, her and I went over. And she's corrected everything she has said here. I don't know what more to add to it because, you know, we do have some hearings that we have are extremely complicated. And if they get complicated, the people do have a right to appeal if they didn't like our decision to the Circuit Court. Now, when they go to the Circuit Court, it doesn't mean that we did something wrong. Because most of the time, nothing happens other than we were right with our wrong. Which I'm proud to say that we've had very few rejections from the Circuit Court on anything that we've done. They've been.
Well, it's been six years that I've been there and I can't think of one where we haven't, where we were reversed. It can happen. It happens to all courts. But we're much more reliable, I think, than people give us credit for.
We put a lot of time in studying. Judge Coriork and myself take our work home, which we're going over everything. So we look like knowledgeable and professional up there. And we don't, so we know the case that we're working on the next day that we go in. So that's what we do. I mean, I've always done that and so does Judge Coriork. And I think we both have satisfied the people that have came in front of us. Most of them that come in, they're sad because they lost a loved one. And I certainly get that. I just lost my husband unexpectedly. So go ahead.
Okay. Okay, we also serve on statewide organizations. I was appointed by the Chief Judge of Court of Appeals to the Conference of Orphans Court Judges. And I'm, for the past two years, I've been the chair of the Conference of Orphans Court Judges. We deal a lot with the law and how the law might need to be changed. Certain things we testify on at the legislature. We evaluate a lot of things. And we coordinate efforts. Orphans Courts around the state are very different. There are some courts in some small jurisdictions, and I'm sure you can understand this, those of you who are active in Mako and can see the difference in what you do in this very high population county compared to what some of the quieter counties deal with. And it's like that with the courts. Our court is very busy. The two courts that are larger than ours are Baltimore County. In terms of the amount of work processed, are Baltimore County. And I'm not sure about PG. I think we might be very close on a level with them. And so that's sort of an overview and we're happy to take questions.
Let me explain one thing. The other course that Judge Coriork is referring to, we work two days a week, long days. And again, Judge Coriork and myself take our work home to be prepared. So we look good and knowledgeable up there and are servicing the people the way we should be. Now, the other courts, they work, the ones that are doing five days a week, they do every third week. I probably shouldn't throw that out there, but we're all Anarona County, you know, employees, so to speak. So we're doing actually more hours than they are with their five days.
If you think about it, every three weeks, we work six days.
Right.
In the courthouse. We do a lot here as well. But we work in the courthouse two full days. They work, which makes six days out of three weeks. They work five days out of six weeks.
Yes.
Three weeks, pardon me.
They're making.
They're making a lot more. I'll just leave it at that. But that isn't really the purpose of our being here today. But Judge Gibson was very eager to have me communicate that, although I was hoping she'd be here as well.
I have actually sent her three messages, so I honestly do not know why.
No.
I honestly don't know why she's not here.
But it doesn't matter. Yeah, this is the chief judge.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Before I go on, I want to offer condolences to Judge Phelps, obviously, on your loss. And we appreciate your presentation, answering questions. I think we are gonna start, I think, Councilwoman Fiedler, if I think is gonna open up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I too want to extend my condolences here, Judge Phelps. I do want to play another history class with this discussion. If I remember correctly, 2018, there was a raise given. It was 2018, I believe. And it was roughly $7, $10,000.
It was a $10,000 raise. We, our court had not had a raise in 12 years. And so in 2018, we were granted a raise of $10,000.
And again, it was 12 years and I never put in for him. I could have. And I just didn't. I, you know, I did not do it. And it was actually brought to my attention through Judge Gibson. And again, I've been texting her like, where are you? But I'm not happy about that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Are there any other questions for the panelists?
No, we had.
From the panelists.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say.
For us. From the council, right?
That's okay. If you had, if you had anything to add, go ahead.
I did. I was just gonna thank you, every one of you, for your time and, you know, consideration to let us be on this today. I appreciate it very much. I really do. And I know how hard Jews work too. I really do. You put a lot of time in. You're out on the street. You're going to community meetings all the time. And I thank every one of you. I actually said I would never want your job. But anyhow, because she's work hard. I know you do. But that's it. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I don't see any other hands. But again, we thank you all for the work that you're doing. I know with the pandemic, the office moved. You guys have a lot going on and we appreciate you updating us. And we definitely will continue conversations. But thank you for coming here today.
You're very welcome. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Secretary, it looks like the Board of Elections is up next. And I'll just introduce, it looks like Mr. David Garrus, our director of the Board of Elections, and then Ms. McCoy, obviously, support. I don't see him on yet. Do we know if he's here? It looks like he's joined us. I'll give him another second here.
Yes, we're getting things connected here.
Good morning.
Hi, Mr. Garrus. You're up next and for the Board of Elections. So I'm not sure if you wanted Ms. McCoy to open up or you wanted to open up, but we're gonna turn it over to you. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. I think Beth is gonna start and then I'll join in.
Sure, Beth McCoy. Budget Office, the Board of Elections budget begins on page 319. And on page 320 is their comparative statement of expenditures. You'll see a $2.9 million increase in general funds. The majority of this is a shifting of the cost for the gubernatorial primary from FY22 to FY23. That's what most of the cost is reflected there. There's also a purchase of electronic poll books, which is a statewide project. And other than that, unless there's any questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Garrus.
Thank you. I had a few slides. I provided the council. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you. If you'd like to move to the next slide. Just a 10,000-foot overview of our office. We have no rain dates for Election Day. So as you're probably well aware, we've had several several schedule changes to the election. Originally, we were planning to have the primary election on June 28th. However, due to the court rulings and court orders, we are now going to have it on July 19th. And we will have early voting from July 7th to July 14th, as well as the general election, which was previously scheduled. Early voting will be from the 27th to the 3rd, and November 8th will be the general election day. Just to introduce our office, we have a board appointed by the governor of three Republicans and two Democrats. Currently, we have two vacant positions, one Democratic and one Republican. My name is David Garrus. If you have not had the chance, if we haven't had the chance to meet or speak. I was recently appointed the election director after serving as deputy director for 13 years. So very excited to have the opportunity to serve the people of Anarona County. Our office has 27 full-time state employees, including the director and deputy director. We are going to have 18 election days in FY23, 16 early voting days, as well as the two election days. So the main point for this slide is our staff definitely works more than two days every two years. Would you like to switch to the next slide? The next slide is just some comparative statistics, just so you can see the turnout from the 2018 gubernatorial election, the 2020 presidential general election. If you switch to the next slide, I will talk about mail-in voting. That's been a major process change for the Board of Elections. As you can see on the right-hand side are mail-in voting totals from the three previous elections. And then our mail-in ballot requests as of May 3rd, so as of yesterday, were 37,000. Process improvements for 2022, we are going to be implementing new mail-vote-by-mail ballot sorting equipment. It's the same kind of equipment that they use in Delaware and Georgia. So there are other states that are already using it. The vendor had an existing state contract to provide mail equipment to other state agencies. So we were able to use that existing contract to procure the equipment. And it is going to scan and sort our ballots. So it's going to eliminate hours of very labor-intensive labor and effort. So very excited about implementing this. If you'd like to switch to the next slide. New for FY23, we'd like to thank the county executive and the county council for their support. As Beth mentioned, we'll be implementing a new electronic poll book solution. This will be implemented for the 2024 election. So we are going to be implementing it for 2022. We're gonna be using the old poll books that we've been using since 2006. However, the state has decided it's time to, time to bring in some new solutions. So we're excited about that. Our ballot mail, our mail-in ballot sorting equipment, like I say, is crucial for the scale of vote-by-mail that we're seeing. All of the large LBEs in Maryland have purchased this equipment. And of course, we just remind everyone that at the moment, Baltimore or Anarona County is larger than Baltimore City. A fact that many people overlook. But in terms of registered voters, we're the fourth or fifth largest jurisdiction in Maryland right now. And of course, we're also going to have our ballot drop boxes. That was a very popular feature of the 2020 elections. All of our ballot drop boxes will be protected by a 24-hour security camera that will be monitoring them. So we also thank the county executive for supporting that. And if you'd like to switch to the last slide, it's just my contact information and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garrus. And again, congratulations on the new position. I know we've seen you around for several years. And of course, Mr. Torrey, obviously, well-deserved retirement. And again, congrats. We're gonna start off, it looks like Councilman Volkey has some questions. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pruski. Thank you, Mr. Garrus. Appreciate your presentation. I'm gonna start with what I hope is an easy question. On the mail-in voting slide that you did, is that number indicative, the 2020 number that you provided on the primary, or is that on the general? I guess.
General election.
General election, okay. And then the number that you provided as of current, that is request for primary ballots or that is request for general ballots?
Request for general election.
Right, okay, got you. And in terms of what the expectation is, do you have any projection on how many mail-in ballots you think you're gonna see? Do you think that you will consistently be in that 150,000 number request going forward? Do you think that's gonna change? I'm asking because I know the state created that permanent absentee list where you can get the ballot every time. So that's what I'm checking on.
In terms of permanent absentees, I don't have the exact number of absentees in Anarona County. I can, I can get that report and email it to you.
Okay.
Yep. Regarding turnout, it's hard to say at this point because we're coming off of the pandemic. However, vote-by-mail requests are still very much higher than they were in 18 and 16. So it's still going to be popular, at least for the near term.
Okay. I have more, Mr. Pruski, but I'm happy to wait if others have questions.
Mr. Volkey, I don't see anybody else. So why don't you just continue with the line of question?
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Garrus, another question I had for you. So we had, I think you saw this, the presentation on campaign finance, public campaign finance that was in front of us. And there were some estimates that were provided, including from the State Board of Elections, on what that would cost. I wanted to ask you a question about something kind of more county level, which is auditing. And if there were any requests by anyone to create some sort of an audit fund where the county would have money available that could be used to audit election results? Because I believe currently, I think it's quite expensive and I just didn't know what that number was. So do you know what that cost is? Do you know if there's any plan or expectation to create some sort of a fund to be able to have that available? Is that something that's been considered at the state or in the county? Just trying to generally ask about that in terms of budgeting.
No, no one has broached that as a fund that we need to create. Regarding audits, the state does require that the Board of Elections require complete numerous audits prior to certifying the election results, including providing all of the scanned ballot images to a third party who recalculates and retotals to make sure that those results match what the voting system vendor, what their solution produced. So there is, there is an auditing component, a very robot, very, very in-depth auditing component to the certification process. But no, we haven't been contacted about creating a fund for post-election auditing.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Mr. Garrus, I appreciate that. Sort of follow-up, I guess, on that line of question. Do you know what that would cost in terms of an audit? Do you have a ballpark on what, if you were to do a full-scale audit on, let's say, a presidential election, what would the number be?
There, it depends on how you wanted to audit it, whether or not you wanted a hand on it. Like if you wanted everybody to do tally teams, if you wanted to do 100% for the jurisdiction, or if you were wanting to do, to do a percentage. I do know in the last legislative session, they did have at least one bill that was, that was calculating risk-limiting audits. And I think that the State Board was required to create a paper or to do a study about the efficacy of risk-limiting. the efficacy, efficacy of risk-limiting audits going forward. So I think that is something that the State Board will be investigating per the, per the legislature.
Okay, I'll probably follow up with you separately about some additional questions on this, but.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey. I do have a question. I don't see any other hands, but certainly if anybody has anything else. I've been getting a lot of questions about when precincts will be settled. I know that there's been shift because of redistricting for congressional, other things. Do you have a timeline in terms of when voters will get an ID? I know there's a lot going on, but any, any update would be helpful.
Absolutely. So redistricting, you're 100% correct, has been a huge project that our entire team has been engaged in over the last several months. We've had, we have had several schedules for this. As you're probably aware, the original plan approved by the state legislature was, was was challenged in court. The court upheld the challenge for the congressional districts, but didn't pursue that for the legislative districts. So we are implementing them. We have updated the MD voters, which is the voter registration system. We are currently in possession of all of the revised maps, precinct descriptions and conversion charts. We're putting those to the final proofing and QC process. The Board of Elections will be meeting on May 12th to certify those new precinct boundaries. Following the May 12th certification, you know, knock on wood that there are no challenges or nothing goes sideways there. We'll have the voter registration data to our vendor by May 13th. So the voter should hopefully have a new voter notification card by the beginning of June and by the last week of May, beginning of June.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Garrus. I know there's a lot of challenges from when the census was delayed and all the way down to the precincts. And I know you've been working hard because I've actually called your office just for constituents asking me, you know, what things, and you've been very helpful, so.
That's good. Glad to hear that.
Any other questions or thoughts? Well, as I always say, Anoromo County has a very solid and secure system for voting and you guys work hard there. We appreciate it and thank you again for what you do and in the upcoming elections and the work that, that you have and the board that's representing us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Secretary, it looks like we have one last presentation for today.
Correct. Just the Liquor Board, Mr. Vice Chair, we are getting them connected here.
Great. And while they're connecting, I have Ms. Hagner as the presenter. I don't know if anyone else is going to join from the actual Liquor Board. It's possible. I didn't want to certainly mention them unless they were there, but we'll wait for her to connect and then then we'll get started.
I am here, sir.
Oh, hi, Ms. Hagner. How are you again?
Thank you. And how are you doing?
I'm doing great, doing great. So I believe Ms. McCoy is also here to support from the Budget Office. I didn't know you wanted her to start or you to start, but I'll turn it over to you.
Beth can start. That would be fine.
Budget Office, the Liquor Board's budget begins on page 316 of your budget book. And on the next page, page 317, you'll see that the general fund budget for FY23 is decreasing by about 30,000. And this is primarily, there's the county's pay package. However, it is offset by removal of one-time costs for purchase of a database from last year. And that's some of their changes. Unless there's any questions, I will turn it to Ms. Hagner.
Our budget is, it's very simple. We did have a extreme cost last year with the implementation of our new database, which we desperately needed. Our other one, it was like 35 years old. And we did start this year with people, our licensees could actually go online and do the renewal online, which we had maybe 2% do that. And the rest were done in paper as we have in the past. Next year, we are going to have everybody online. So also, we're going to be doing, we're going to be getting iPads for our 19 inspectors. And they will be able to go out into the field and be able to connect to their establishments and be able to do all the work through there. Instead of doing paper, they will just submit it and we'll go right into our database. So it's exciting things are going to be happening. Um, our, our move over to Commerce Park has been great. We love the space. I was going to tell the Orphans Court, come on, I mean, their space is gorgeous from what we've seen from the outside. We are, right now, we have 579 establishments. We are getting ready to issue three new licenses this week. So I mean, it's, we lost some because of COVID, but we have gained them back. So it's, it's just business as usual. So our budget is a little less this year, but that is just because of the database. So, and we do have five full-time employees now. We do have two secretaries on staff, which we've needed for years. So we just hired Ms. Michelle Drake and she's working out great. So hopefully, everything will continue on our path. So if there's any questions or anything that we can do for you, please do not hesitate.
Thank you, Ms. Hagner, for the presentation. Is there any council members that have any questions for the Liquor Board or their budget? Okay, well, that seems pretty easy. Thank you, Ms. Hagner and the staff. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
You have a great day.
You too, sir. Thank you very much. Everybody have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Bye.
That is it in terms of our presentations for today. Is there any other business to be brought before the council today? Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, is there a second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The County Council is adjourned until tomorrow. At 9:00 AM, we meet virtually, continue to the Budget Department presentations. Please continue to check the county website for more information and updates. Thank you so much and have a great day.